All right, it is six o'clock and I recall the Dalton Township Planning Commission meeting February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. We'll start with the roll call. A, I am here. A C is excused. Todd, here. Lee is excused. Jesse?
Here.
John?
Here.
And Kevin is excused. Okay, the table of the agenda for tonight, we do have some things that have been added on which they just need to be brought into the current packet. I'm here, but as far as the agenda, is there anything that we need to? No. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Agenda for all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, we will move on to the approval of minutes for the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting. We did have addition that Stephen provided, which was the motion, one of the motions that was passed. So that is included in that. And we can do those together, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anything, any more things? Make adjustments, otherwise we retain the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes and resolution P C twenty five dash zero one as presented. All right, all those in favor, let me take a roll call vote on that one.
Yes.
Okay. All right. A, yes. Todd?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right. All right, next up, we have public comment. We do have public here tonight. We have a number of items that are farther down in this republic hearing tonight. You will have special time dedicated for that, so you will have an opportunity to speak on that. So we'll ask if you have something that's for one of those, for either of the two items here, for the special venue or for the road commission. We'll save them for that, but this would be just a general comment section. You can take up to three minutes to ask questions, speak on anything you have at this point. I will open that up at six oh two. Let's see, we have no comments at that point. I will close that at six oh.
This is, I'm not familiar with this whole thing, but what is this? What was your question again? Do I have anything to say about it?
No, this is just, we have a general, at the beginning of the meeting, we have a we just have a public comment section where somebody could come in and you may be asking a question about something that you have that's not already on the agenda. You could bring something up at that point. If you have something, but if it's one of the items that's below you, at one point, we're going to have public comment on that where everyone can be able to speak on that.
Yes, I'm not sure. Is that being a neighbor of what's happening?
Correct.
If I don't say anything now, then I have nothing to say here for it.
Hush. Sorry. What are you here for, a special event venue?
Yeah.
Yes, you'll have a chance when that public train comes up. There will be actually public comment, we'll open up the public hearing. We'll get into more of that information on there, give the opportunity to hear what the proposal is, and then we open up the public hearing, which is to get comments on that. And at that point, you stand up and be able to give us your name and address. Then I'll speed up three minutes and speak on that.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay. Again, any other public comment? And I gotta close that at six oh, six oh four. All right, now we are going on to, we have two items for public hearing tonight. We have P C twenty five dash oh three, which is the Special Land Use and Site Plan Review for the Special Events Venue. Do we have someone here for that? Okay. What we're gonna do here is give them an opportunity to speak to their proposal and what they're looking to do at that point, or if we have any questions on that, or if there's something, any answer, but try to give just general information on it to be able. Go ahead if you would like to.
Thank you. I just, I felt, I wanted to bring you tonight to see what the venue will look like. It's really both the same except for this will be enclosed here, this wall will be enclosed. There was a few, found like some major words venue that we want to address tonight, not our issue, but they come up and stuff.
If you would, not to interrupt, what we'd like to do is just have you kind of give us what you're looking to do in the venue.
Okay.
Kind of what the venue, basically what you're looking to do on property.
Yeah, well, it'd be for special events and weddings, where actually you're going to have parking area for it, but actually a common area for it. Most all things will be inside the building. Again, it'll be an eight thousand square foot building. I don't know too many other things that would be a concern if you have any questions. Were a few things that were brought up as far as our drainage, things like that, we've got that addressed. Parking and things like that, that's been addressed. No concerns and stuff, hopefully we've addressed all that, so hopefully we'll have most of our venues be like Friday for somewhat entertainment for a rehearsal. Weddings on Saturday and clean up that evening, nothing much on Sundays. There may be a few special events, but it'll be something different. Some of the comments, I don't know if you've seen the different comments and issues that were brought up to us. So we've, Michael Belt, he's actually been doing our drawing for it. I'd like to turn that over to him if you guys have questions. We've met also with Steve on a couple of different things today, except we mentioned today. Just to go over it so that here's, if there's any problems, we can address them right there. There's, I think we have, so I'd like to turn it over to Michael and he can go ahead and answer any of your questions that you might have on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike. Good evening, I'm Michael Belt, one of the eco architects of landscape D O C. I'm up here as an extra, I need to be next to my own house here. And I've been commissioned by Tamara and Lang to help them out on this farm site. Interesting enough, if you're on the horses, it's kind of named after the black horse, Black Pearl. I'm working myself, I appreciate that. Just a few things that we talked about today, I did bring a drawing up before you. As Mike had mentioned, some issues with the special use regarding the adding rest, zoning. And finding out that actually that's parking and entrances for that type of facility falls under commercial because of the use of the building for as a venue center is for a commercial. So we, gentlemen, this morning, went down and filled out an application for a commercial driveway, which I've attached to the drawings here too. We have got some of those icons. So what you have before you there is the updated, as of this afternoon, we had a very productive meeting with Steve here, and this is the second one we had to address any concerns he had, including items from the road commission. So what we see before you is what we addressed. Before we believe we've met every objective pertaining to the planning commission. Remember the sheets that we looked at, I'm not sure how it is, especially you, events venue. That's what we followed to make sure this qualifies. And Stephen, there's like fifteen items on there. We might have to be torn those today individually, and we've addressed all of these. Believe you all, the current that we conform to. There's a few things that I want to just point out regarding, there were a few pages here that Stephen sent us as far as his evaluation of everything from parking to site access and so on. So I just pulled out of that the items that we discussed today, not to be repetitive. So basically, all the buildings you see on the site there. The building you see on your site there are all shown with setbacks, there are conformance. We did move the rental suite over more, even though it's, it's not a primary building. We can go up to six feet, but just to be okay, we've got twenty five feet, so we did. We also shifted the main event center, building over to allow parking to come up on the east or east side. So part of the parking is on the east side, and part of the parking is in the front there. And we're over the parking. If the minimum of fifty car spaces, we have a hundred. And of those a hundred, there's included for area of free, that's every twenty five, for that accessible, area of free access, and we have a sheet of this, which shows that for your reference. We talked about lot coverage and so on, and we're conforming, we have about five, over five percent of lot coverage, so that's about ninety five percent green space. Those are a lot of space allocated to just natural open area, there's a wood area to the back. With a ver has created along the west side that provides screen to the neighbor to the west end. And so we fill with the landscaping we've added and the natural features of the site. We've buffered things such as sound, all the issues on the site there, so that we're not bringing any, any sound issues in there. The fencing, there's a note about that, we have a split rail, kind of a decorative, three to four foot high split rail decorative fence in the front. The question is that we'll make sure it's not anywhere in ditch area, because there is a requirement for the covert up there. And I did check out the covert, basically just saying this for the residential. The driveways have been staked out with the road commission, and back in October, they, they said it was okay to do a residential one. In time, it's changed to commercial, so we, we applied for that, and now we have a commercial driveway, which a lot, looks a lot like the residential one, including the location of the culvert are exactly the same. So we'll make sure that that does conform. What's the permit's are done, the sticking is done, and the sizing is done for the covert. That'll be part of the approval process. That may in fact be a deferred item or item of condition, because it's in process. And we don't really have to conform to all of the road requirements. Okay, we also adjusted parking spaces to be ten foot by eighteen. One question said that, and they have eight, we thought that, but we agree with what ten foot. And we did the math and the drawings to show the size of every parking space, every parking lot. Okay, again, I mentioned before the site access is via two commercial driveways. See that in the drawing? Mentioned one seventeen feet part, so that was real close to where they were staked initially. Another issue came up with stormwater. The problem is ultimately flat. There are somewhat of a high water area, and there's a need for itching and for culverts out there. So what we've done is we've gently created the property back to the south. And as we assaulted that, we put spot elevations on there. We got the building set about a half a foot above the roadway, then everything gently slopes to the back. In addition to that, we worked out some numbers to include a swale, called a grassy swale, rain garden to collect any, any water that's connected to a perimeter drain system around the building. That'll be with stone on top. We have a landscape detail for that, which shows that. That'll be collected into a six inch tile drain, and then it'll be calculated into an eight inch that takes it over to that grassy swale. And the event of a heavy rainfall or those fifty hundred year eruptions that we get every, ten half a century, that's where that wants to go. Most of the time, it'll be high and dry, so we're gonna make sure it's grassy and seated to be a nice green site. Intended to be a pond, is intended to be a retention area to contain that heavy rainfall for a short period of time. I've got to go to the road commission. They, we did put out the drawings for your records, requirements for the driveway. There was a note on there, it's got basically a, it'd be okay to do a residential driveway. I repeat myself a little bit. So I struck out the note for commercial, because that, your time appeared to be for us definitely. They credit for that, that's what we understood. It's not been changed, it was back to commercial, it's a safe detail. Okay, so we made that correction on the drawings, and so now we have all the commercial. I think that's pretty much all the main items. If I missed anything, you want anything that we've discussed today that might have been pertinent to find mission? Okay, so, okay.
Any questions for? All right, if you go ahead and have a seat, we're gonna, what we're going to do now is we're going to open up the public hearing. And at that point, if we do have a question, we ask that you ask the question of us. If it's something we need to get clarification from, we may ask, and we'll try to keep this so that it remains a, sometimes things can get heated, and we don't want that to be the case tonight. So we want to give everyone opportunity to be heard, and we want to make sure everyone has a chance to hear what's being stated. So if we get to that part, when we get to the, when you'd like to make a comment, all we ask is that you stand and give us your name and address for the records, and Steve can have that. At that point, I will open up the public hearing. P C twenty five dash oh three and the public comment. Anyone that would like to make a comment?
I would.
Okay.
Do I have to stand or go up there?
I think you're okay right there, as long as we can hear you there, that's fine.
I can say at first, I'm not used to public speaking, and that makes me nervous. Also, been an emergency, I have a heart, so I'm gonna be careful. I'm not gonna get upset, but I can't.
Yep, absolutely. So anyway. If you could just, your name and address, that's a good starting point for us, so at least.
Name and address? Steve Klein. Twenty thirty seven East McMillan.
All right.
I'm right next to this, like fifty yards from this building and a hundred yards that I live in was, it's been, I bought the place from Mike. I built a house there, it's been the best place I've ever lived in my life. And now this is coming next door. And I'm not happy about it. He told me about it two weeks ago. When he had his property turned to agricultural, I let it go because of this, he wanted room for his horses and cows. So I didn't protest it. This has all been secret to me. Now, two weeks now, now this is all gonna happen. And now it's too late. They've gone so far with it now, it's so far behind, I know I can't stop it. That's where I'm at. I have a new parking lot next to me.
Just, just so we're clear on that, this is for public hearing tonight? We haven't, we haven't approved anything yet? That's kind of what we're doing tonight, if we're gonna hear the concern of the citizens, and that's kind of what we're moving on. So at this point, like I said, we're still at the point where we're fact finding and looking at information there, so. I wouldn't, I wouldn't read into things, but we just need to, we need to get some things answered.
I have to read into it, when all of this money has been put into it already, nobody would go into that if they didn't think they had it nailed.
I will. Any other comment? Is it just?
I hold my comments until I, do I hold my comments?
Yep, okay. Yes?
Come on, move, Stan. Donovan, five hundred thirty sixty five, Dillon Road. I live approximately twelve hundred feet from Mr. and Mrs. Taylor's property. They have a beautiful property there, and it's relatively secluded from any noise, and I don't, as busy as our road is, I don't think that additional traffic over a few days is gonna be that big of an issue. And I really feel that this would be a huge asset to our community. Now, we don't have much like this in Dalton Township, and everybody is looking for that mid wedding, on farm birthday parties for their kids. So honestly, I'm really excited to see this happen, because I think it would be really great to have community. But.
All right, thank you. Yes?
On the co-eggers, I live at thirty one forty three, Dillon Road. I feel pretty much the same way that she does. I live a little bit further down Dillon than she does. And I've known Mike for, Mike and Tammy for years. And he has always been very good about keeping everything very clean, very, you know, taken care of. He's also done a really nice job of always handling things there.
Thank you. Yes?
Harley Tyler, I live at thirty nine six. I want to back up with their saying, I think Tammy's done an amazing job keeping her property clean and nice, one of the best looking properties on our road, actually, in my opinion. They've always been informative and understanding, great neighbors. We all kind of come together to communicate, know about this, and they've been very direct about it, all very much in support.
Thank you.
Yes, that would be at twenty eight fifty five, Wolf Road. I brought me and Mike together behind the cemetery. It's a great idea.
I really don't know, but I don't feel good, so I'm gonna have to go.
Anyone else? Yes?
Brent Ross, nineteen fifty nine, East McMillan Road. I'll kind of piggyback on what Steve said, the gentleman just departed. When I first got the piece of paper, it was for going from residential to agricultural. And then, so it was from agricultural to business. And I didn't know a stinking thing about what the special event center was gonna be. However, I do know that the water that is in the ditch in the front runs right through my backyard, and the water that's in the ditch in the back that he failed to mention runs right through my front yard. So every time that water's coming, it's coming my way. So like when you changed Twin Lake and how you were draining that, you put your drains in, that changed how it affects my property. And this will change how it affects my property too. There's not like a silt fence on there, you've taken every tree off of there. You got silt fence on here? You don't have any silt fence on here?
If we want to just.
So when we're looking at it, that water's gonna end up in my yard. And that, that'd be my main concern. When, when this first started, I thought for sure it was a pasture, perhaps another barn or whatever, and now we're to this.
Any other comments? Can I just, we have one second, okay. Having no further comments, we'll close the public comment section at six twenty two. All right, now we're up for board communication, and what we do now is, if you would like to address some of the things that were mentioned there, that certainly would be a prerogative for you at this one. We just want to actually direct it to us.
I just want to make sure I'm okay. Just, just a couple of things as you were stating incorrectly.
Okay.
First of all, not all of the trees were taken off the site. There's a quite a point of forest there, and the earthiest corners indicate that not marked as trees. There's also a family tree, kind of like we've built everything around it. It's kind of special because it's there. We've also added, and skipping back to the site, including all of the berms or between the gentleman that's been left here. That berm is there, it's there, it was put there, upstream that, and add additional landscaping to that as well. The other thing about the drainage, we're doing everything we can do to control the drainage of the site, I'm painting it, you know, all the surface drainage, which you can handle. Can you tell us where the, where the water comes from, so we can address that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did you, Chris?
Just, is there a specific?
There is a drain in the front of that thing that you're gonna have to put culverts across. Like, right through and right across my driveway goes across his driveway. It goes right into that creek, it goes right through my backyard. And there's a drain behind there that goes right through my front yard. It goes right through your yard. That drain is, there's both sides drains. And when you put our surfaces in, water has to go somewhere. It's gonna go to those drains, I don't care if you put a retention pond in there, I have ponds too.
It's not a pond, it's a, it's a grass.
Whatever you want to call it.
Yep.
When it rains, and that is a swamp, I watch them go across there with this tractor. I know what it's like when you pull those roofs out of there.
All right, okay, that's okay. Okay, whatever that problem is, we will do our best to work with the neighbors to address that issue. I know that some of the problems sometimes is blockage. These culverts we're putting under are meeting highway standards, and are somewhat that was where we're supposed to go. We weren't applying to make sure. That's up there? I think I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't take all the waste of that site.
Where are you on the septic permit?
I'm sorry.
Where are you on the septic permit?
I'm sorry.
Where are you on the septic permit?
We haven't started the septic permit yet, we just want to get through the site plan and also the special use permit. The one thing to address that, that, Mr. Ross, I've known him for many years, in fact, I sold him the property that he's also has. Next, pond or the ditch, you might call it, that goes along McMillan Road there. I've been there for forty years, and I have seen it pour down rain and very little water level of the rains, very little. And I understand you do live in a swamp, because it's very wetland there, and that's why you had to build your house up and fill to stay out of that swamp. And that's why I'm trying to work with them to keep the groundwater at our site, not to let it go down anywhere else's, nobody else's property. That is one of the requirements that we would have, that you'd have to keep the water from your site on your site. We can't have it. Yep, we're, we're gonna spend a sizable amount of money to make sure that we have the retention area and stuff there. So, one of the things on the driveway permit, I did, I'm saying, like I say that, when I first applied for this driveway permits, I, I applied for it, and I applied for a residential. Surprisingly, the excavator guy that I hired come in and cleared this property, and we did leave a lot of the woods and towards backside. He comes to me, got it done in eight days. And I wanted the driveway to get, so we could actually access that property. Well, so I put in for residential, and it was approved, it was fifty dollar per permit. And Jared said, hey, just go with that, start with that, and we'll work from there. So, okay, that's fine. Because I have an excavator here right now, that he's willing to go to work for us and put these culverts in and get our driveways in. What else came about, we didn't get the permits in time, and then he had to leave off for another job, the time he's gonna come back, winter hit, and we had stopped that project from that point. Since then, we've talked to the road commission, and they're okay with, I want to head now to progress with the, from the agriculture to the residential, and I'm going into a little bit more of the driveway to go to commercial. And the only thing, and I just got this today before we came here, it said, we are requesting a set of site plans to review the elevations in regard to proper water set, yet we aren't proceeding with this permit. Well, that's, one of the things was when I talked to Jared, he's the actual engineer there, and he basically told me, he said, if you're gonna go for a, a commercial driveway, it's gonna take you a lot longer to get, compared to a residential, I can approve it and have it ready for you in a couple, three weeks. But that's why I said, let's go with that. I got the guy ready to put the permit, I said, how much more is it gonna take going to the commercials? No, not that much more, but you can start with the residential and work with the commercial. That's all that all came about. We're not trying to, to offend anybody, and I know Steve for a very long, he mentioned that he just heard about this. Well, and I told him when we started clearing land and everything, I personally went to his house and said, Steve, this was going on, we're building a vet center. And I actually said to him, we built this berm area, actually, it will take ninety percent of the solid away from going to his home. I also added approximately another thirty feet before the berm from the, his, his property line to give him more of a area, and I left that whole woods. So between the trees and the berm and things like that, we're doing everything we can. And, and the building will be insulated, so the solid is gonna be very minimal to what you should be bothered with that whole. I, I've known him for a long time, you know, since. And I went to his house, and so I didn't want to surprise any neighbors, I did not go. Mr. Ross, I, I should have probably, I'm sorry about that. But, you know, neighborhood, I figure everybody knew about it, because I spoke. But, you know, neighborhood, I figured everybody knew about it because I spoke with all the other neighbors pretty much, but anyway. He was aware, he invited to us and said, hey, this is what we're doing, so hey, I appreciate you putting that berm there, keeping the soils over there, not bothering me, it won't be the lights and that. Ross is going to do an additional besides wood, that additional plants, trees, stuff like that, so.
Okay.
We're keeping that for him.
All right. All right, now, uh, what we're going to do is, the board, we will then start our deliberation consideration of this. We may ask at this point additional questions as we get into the actual information here. Does anyone have questions for them or? Steve, are we okay then with the drainage and everything, that the answers on that as far as water retention and, no? Because I don't know if that's... We have nothing really on here that, that defines...
Yeah, so they didn't add, there's no contours, they did add spot elevations, that just where the elevation at the point where that spot is. But there are no contours.
Maybe for their benefit, Steve, you could explain explicitly what you or we require for a, for the purpose of the proper drainage. Whether it's another third-party engineering firm or the architect can do it or a license, I'm not sure.
And that's up to the discretion of the planning commission, if they require, you know,
Okay.
just regular calculations or a stamp from a certified engineer, a stormwater engineer. Or other review, that's whatever you feel you need to make that decision. The general, the requirement is that all the stormwater runoff stays on that site unless it's reviewed and approved by the water resource commissioner.
Any questions? Thank you.
One thing I was looking at, Steve, and... Part of everybody. Yep. Well, it's from what I could tell with the, the, it worked back again. And it looks like these, these two lots were just recently cleared. And where it comes into stipulation as far as those lots need to be combined with either the principal residence or used as present agricultural property. But it don't seem like it's used as present agricultural, so I don't know. It seems kind of gray right there that they, it was just cleared, but yeah. I guess where I'm going with it is I, I think it's going a little bit outside of, at the present time, I guess, maybe going outside of the intent of the... So. Not that I, I think, I think it would be a good fit there, I like the idea, but, um, as far as the intent of our zoning, you know. This supposedly put to, put to active agriculture. So that, that looks odd to me, I guess. As far as the plans are concerned, I mean, I, they, they need quite good work, I think. Just because I'm familiar with the type of work and whatnot, you guys are going there. I know there's high water there, I know the soils are not real good. I would highly suggest getting a septic permit lined up because there's a very good possibility they won't even give you one just because of the type of soils. They might consider those wetlands because they go by soil type. Even though it's not what you think is wetlands.
On that septic permit, I'm still not real familiar with that, although I had and built another home out that way, but we actually had to go with an above ground drain field for the septic, uh, so that's what we're kind of proposing that we'll be doing. Is an above ground and then of course we'll grasp that.
Which is possible, it's possible, I guess what I'm getting at is if you have no idea what you got put in for a septic, that could change a lot on this site plan. It could change retention area, it could change how you're going to drain your water, it could change everything. You don't know how big it's got to be, you don't know what they're going to require for reserve area. So to me, um, this is an excellent conceptual joint, but it's not a conceptual joint. As far as the size of the, you know, we're not talking a small 25 park, we're not, we're talking 100 park, you're not, I mean, it's big, there's a lot of lot. I don't see any calculations anywhere, which I'm not an engineer, nope, but I can tell they haven't been done. Personally, I, I like the idea of it, I think it would fit there good myself, like but along with like what some of the neighbors are saying, stormwater is a big thing. Very heavy ground. I don't do it that well and, and I agree that everything looks very nice around there, you know, but I think we need to look at that zoning intent a little bit as far as possibly. Our souls, maybe.
I have something.
I definitely need a lot of... That's...
Uh, we, we have closed public comment, um, at this point, but if there's a question, what, what is your question?
Well, my question is, because I'm not understanding what you're saying as far as, um, you have some concerns about adjoining the property, I'm not understanding what you're, what you're saying, I guess.
Because the...
The property has already been adjoint, we did that back in October.
The two parcels are adjoint, correct?
Yes.
But they're not adjoint to the parcel of your residence, is that?
Correct.
Right, and so what our ordinance tells us anyways is that for those two parcels, either, well, the way I understand it anyways, unless let me tell you, you guys are much different, but those two parcels would either need to be connected with, not just connected to, but adjoint with your principal residence parcel or those two parcels need to be current agricultural use. Is that right? Am I saying that right, Steve?
That is my understanding.
Which is neither. Because I think the intent of our ordinance is, okay, somebody's got a hobby fire, you know, and they built a, they built a wedding event there, right? Which in this case they do, but could they be a separate parcel now? Just think about down the road, you build the building, sell the place off. And now, now we're not following the intent of, in my opinion anyways. Whether it's current ag use.
I know, just two comments to your question there is, you mentioned not being adjoining. I do own the horse ranch ahead of that, so it's all actually going to be agricultural. We're going to still promote the horses and stuff and different things like that. I'm also want to deal with the, have, have a, different farmers, things like that, also want to deal with 4H children. And before that, I was also involved with the equestrian team with Reach Bumper Schools. And they had come to my arena and rode in my front arena, which is going to make all that stuff available too. I, I'm actually want to keep it as much agriculture as I possibly can, I'm not going to build no skyscraper out there, it's going to be a modern, but still a little bit of a rusty looking fire.
And I think what, what Jesse was saying was... Combine, kind of joining maybe. Yeah, it needs to be... When you have an egg, when it's all one... Section of egg, if I'm correct. That it would need to all be egg in order, it would need to be combined, the, the three parcels would actually need to be combined.
So if the parcel that this is proposed on is currently being put to active agricultural use, then they would not need to combine those. But if it's not currently an active agricultural use, it would, it would need to combine.
So if I were to move my cows to that back pasture in the interim, that makes it okay, is that what you're saying? Because I mean, eventually I'm going to have my, my mini horse there and my goats out there. It's just not the right time of year to move them back there, but that is the intent. So I guess what I'm asking is like, is that what you're saying, is I need to move them back there now?
Need to be existing. Existing agriculture, correct? That what you're saying? That's what I'm understanding.
Well, up until October, it was, October, we clear trees out, so now we no longer are using it as pasture, it's winter, there's no trees or some protection. So up until October, that's what it was. We have actually, I think, housing.
We're actually past the point of public comment, I appreciate, I, I appreciate what, it helps what you're saying. This is more of like, we get into the, how we designate certain areas have to be, we're trying to see if it complies with what our current standing is on that, so.
This is starting to sound very bureaucratic. I think what we need to do is really simplify, clarify exactly how the land needs to be designated, what the process is to get it, from where it is today to commercial with respect to the egg. And I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit confused myself. When you talk about residential, uh, maybe Steve could help, I, I'm, I'm really not sure, but I think there's a lot of confusion, am I right?
What, what you had mentioned, and I was actually confused as you had mentioned. If we had zoned an agricultural situation, they had been zoned when I am the years ago agriculture, it got changed. A long story into that.
Yeah.
But anyway, to make it short, it's in agriculture, we can actually put a building out, this building, a barn or something like that.
Yeah.
And, and if it facilitates animals, which if you'll see in our drawing, they're actually going to have animals on their property to keep the agricultural theme goings within our commuters, I mean, we're going to have, I bought, I just purchased a miniature herford bull. I've got a miniature pony, I've got goats, we're going to have sheep, we're going to have, so it's going to be agriculturally take bound or funded. Uh, we're trying to keep that, that same situation, we don't want to turn into a city back there anyway. And when Jesse mentioned as far as getting a permit for the septic, there's numerous permits I do have to get, I have to get septic, let it go, plumbing and all those, but we haven't gone that far with it and the reason I haven't is because this stage right here, I want to make sure we got the site plan and then also that we were able to get through the special use permit. And the special use permit actually allows us to have this barn on site, to have this facility to go with special events. And that's why we're doing and going that direction. I'm, I'm, and what Jesse mentioned, uh, having to have a septic, maybe not even be able to get a septic. One of the products, person that I sold, one was Steve here, he put a house back there and it's within 100, 150 yards and where our septic's will actually be, so he was able to get a septic system in there, he's great building well. And, and so Mr. Ross has been able to also get a septic system into there. So I think we'll be able to get a septic, we may have to jump through hoops and make possible a little more money.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're kind of in the point where we're, we're doing our board review and what we're looking to see is what the requirements are for the special use. It says in the special use that it's a current active, we're just trying to make sure we're... At least, he's just trying to find that, make sure, make sure what that would be.
Does that help? I have plenty of neighbor chairs that could tell you that up until October, that has been passed, you're running four of my horses and it has, up until over in the middle of this, it has been had this whole time. That's what we've been utilizing for all along.
So it is, I guess, basically the same.
Because I remember you were literally looking at all this, especially that, that, you know, it's like... Some of these recommendations that I can use in the staff will...
Did some of that...
Yes, a couple of examples, yeah. The recommendation section, you know. I think you could... You don't really have enough information to make decisions that I would...
Should all...
Scratch, you didn't scratch. I mean, we were wrong there. Still active to...
All right, let's be mindful of that, that's, I don't know. But I can't remember doing all this.
That helps, you know, in my, in my opinion, it's like... This sounds quite... Just based on the discussion with the planning commission, it sounds like it's not enough.
If you had retrieved that, change that, I would say, what, what more should need?
Yeah, that's why you just kind of list out if there is anything else you would need to make that decision. Then... Fire trial with the old fire fire, makes that most important.
That was saying, right, your, your suggestion. Dramatic, gasp, suggestion makes a lot of sense to, uh... Hold it a month. I, well, because I remember things.
I didn't see, that's an imprint. Yeah. I mean, I know it's time in 16-53. We changed that.
We're wondering if that...
Did change that.
Okay.
And that is, and I...
Because I, that's what I remember.
Yep, we were going to find where it was. Yeah, I included the new standards for, um... I just left it, uh, special land uses in the, uh... The new 16.53 that is included after the stand, uh, the staff report.
I missed that.
Here we go, any proposed structure should be compatible with the existing features on the site.
We just found our answer, because we, we, we have something in here that's a little bit different than, two things different, so it's, this is the one thing, we have a... I'll, I'll preach for just a minute. Used to have a, a thing that was the size of a poster and that was all of the township ordinances. We now have this thing. And we have to make sure we are not competing or going around things so that somebody can come back later and say, hey, you didn't do what you're supposed to do, so. This is where Jesse's our, uh, he's an expert on this and, uh, we found this in the original one.
No pressure.
But now we also found where we have, this book has been updated a little bit, we've been trying to, every time we add something, we got to take two things out, so we're in the process of doing that.
Action nine, still, um, still talks about the principal residence and operator and active use.
Right. So I get out my soapbox, I apologize, that's why, we just have to make sure we're doing this, you do deal with it, yes, sir. That's why I just, we just have to make sure we're doing this due diligence here.
I shouldn't be an issue with the proposal. Aren't there the, the waters?
Yep. Having that as, as something that is just run through the numbers and that type of thing is just a lot of, uh, there's a lot of area, a lot of volume.
With no direction. Here, I mean, I don't think we should prove that way.
Should we table it and then bring it back next month? I can view it if you have the.
I can give them. I mean, I know to an extent, they're kind of looking for a. Okay, on special use, but even with special use, we're asking still here, let's see if I wait something. Yeah. I remember back in September, when the, he came, the plan resolved, we said we would. Be fine with that. I mean, they were looking for that, that type, right? And we were okay with the thought of it or whatever.
So getting the drainage and the.
Me, the drainage is a big thing.
Okay, some drainage and then the permits.
Just so it does, something doesn't come back at us, that's all. I mean, I know they got, what they gotta do, but.
For roads or for the driveways?
Driveways.
And, um. Septic.
It's just gonna handle that, it could change things a lot, but I'd say they're fine. Not gonna get one or whatnot, but it could change things.
We stayed, I've seen a lot of those above ground. I mean, that's what.
Possibility, yeah.
Yeah, they gotta do that, where, where's that gonna go on here?
I think given the sensitivity of the water, the land, the soil, the drainage that, uh, showing that engineers runoff report or documents is entirely necessary. We do that for all the other, uh, projects that come before us.
I'm surprised you didn't do that, actually. Well, let me, is that a question?
Yeah, yes.
All right. I've worked through the last, probably four or five. I, I've worked through a number of, um, three distributioners. Okay, I've never had a failure. It's mathematics. Uh, I have the ability to design and act of Muskegon Township, but a, but a, um, a, they wanna call it a money amount on it to make sure it's okay. So we worked with staff, I've offered to work with Steven to make sure you get those calculations, okay? I did some rough calcs because what you're seeing before you is not the big sheets that I have here. That's a worksheet based on our meeting this afternoon. So what you're reading before that happened weeks ago, when we submitted the first cover out for review, so you're getting those comments. So what you have before you, we just found this entire list that you're looking at, and we've addressed every one of them, I believe, to the satisfaction of your plan. Now we have to come to you now and convince you that you're capable of doing this project. I'm capable of doing that. I've done it before, it's numbers. Never had a failure, I've done ponds, grassy swales, I engineered out rain gardens with several layers filtration stuff. Worked with the DNR, worked with EPL. I have experience. I, I, I know architects typically are not considered engineers, but part of what we do, science and art. The science of my brain, so we don't, we don't do anything that doesn't explain the fail. Okay? Secondly, what makes it sure it works, but that's the art part of architecture, that's, I don't need to tell you. We do want to make, we print the presentation, this is the presentation. Steven asked for full-size drawings, and we do give this information to work with Steven, to give him what he needs. So we don't have put another hardship on these people, this readings in September, as their project is going. We'll work with you and give you everything you need. I have an engineer, my engineer will take my accounts. I have never had a failure. Okay, I have one now. I, I will have to review, if you want this stamp approval on there, I'll hit on stamp my calculations for you. Would that be okay with the board? And what you're looking for, okay?
I think the, the three things mentioned.
Just put them.
Okay. And the septic?
That's a county issue, we don't, we don't, we have so much site, you remember, we have acreage here. We have plenty of room on this. There are requirements that county will put on what size it is. I've done per test myself, I go out on site, I've done a bunch of many. I do filtration tests and so on, but I've worked very closely. They will get a drawing to see what we have around it. So we have to, I've got something. At the desable, for example, that's a, a, not a permanent structure. It's a chip to put up to have a little. Okay, we can move that, other reasons could be, cause we have plenty of, of area on the site to put any size, even reserve the area. Would, because it's a high water area, what most likely would be, they would actually not design the system, but the county, and they would ask you to reserve areas equal size, then through this, okay? So yes, those are documents that don't happen right now. Uh, it's a, it could be a deferred item or condition, I'm hearing, I've heard three conditions. So what was the storm drainage, so I do that. I can do that, which is certified, sealed, I have a check. Number two, we can get the county information once. Try and apply for their well and drainage, and they have to have the septic. And it would be separated by the. Size and work. Number two, what's your third one? Sorry, I.
We had the septic, the drainage, and the driveways.
Okay, the driveways, we're already applying for the driveway permits. She's already applying for the commercial permit. I compared the two, they're. Pretty identical. Not a lot of difference. We said, we said we want twenty-five feet, we have twenty-five feet. People has no problem with our driveways. I know that, uh, the business in drawings to the road commission with their information, this came from the road commission. This is what they gave us. They were off their website, so I couldn't, I don't know if they showed you that we are in compliance. So how they want us to set a site plan, but you have to give us some direction to do that. We don't wanna go there yet, if you're gonna say we're gonna table it for a little bit. So I would, I would hope that you would consider applying. Additions, and we'll work with, with you and with the county commission.
Let us do this right now, we still have some dialogue now and see where we're at.
Yep. Is, is that the three conditions that we could make as far as if we did move forward with that? Make that, that we have to have drainage? That usually is part of document that we see that the drainage has been reviewed. And we don't have that on here per se. For the septic, where the deck location is and types it's required. And that's usually something that we would see in, in the drawing. And as far as the driveways, we do have something there that, that does state that. I mean, I know we've done that before with driveways, that they have to look through the road.
Effects.
Yeah. So you could, you could make those conditions and have the, um, stormwater. Yeah. No. Stormwater. Plan sealed by an engineer. That shows that, the stormwater calculations that show. That all the stormwater runoff will be retained on site without going into any of the ditches. Um, that could be a condition.
I'm try, I know we've done things along that line before.
Yeah, we, yeah, let's, let's figure out the wording for it. But we did those three. I personally liked a, a nice plan that when somebody comes down, goes to your, now say you approve that. Yeah, I agree with that.
That I, I don't know, I don't see that, I can't tell in parking space, I can't tell this, I can't tell that, but. What do you guys think?
If, if it's, uh, approval condition, conditional approval based upon that document that we need, then I'm okay with that. But you can't go forward without it. I guess, you know, we present that to Steve and.
So additional, when additional approval would. Kind of pump that approval of the stormwater plan to myself and whatever engineer they. Left it. You just be trusting that. The engineer did it right without looking at final product.
What are the chances that the pl- the plan for the stormwater, the septic, and all that would rearrange is considerably enough? I know there's a lot of distance out back.
Yes, yeah.
Seems like there's a lot of conditions to.
Your side.
That's what I'm saying.
I think it makes sense.
I just, let's, let's have this to your side.
I was trying to. That's all I was saying, same, I mean, that's all I was trying to say too. I mean, I, I think there would be a nice bit there, I think it'd be very helpful. To me, this is the conceptual job. And there's so many things that can change with this versus this versus this versus that, and then. Picking out all the verbiage for how you want. For applies that.
You know, we're.
You need to get a septic.
We're in the.
I mean, I, you can get a septic from that, with a special use from that. I mean. And technically, we're supposed to have that anyways, but we approve a special use from that, we're supposed, we're supposed to have that inside of three or whatever, that's the way I understand it.
So my understanding, like we spoke with Mr. Perkins this afternoon again, is that that's not, like, I don't have to have those ahead of time, I just have to get that. I'm just looking to, I don't wanna keep spending more money.
I understand.
Maybe, right, like, we have got a ton of money wrapped up into this, which is fine, I mean, that's also a part of it. But I'm at the point where I need a, yes, we're going to do this, because I have to start getting contractors. I can't go anywhere till I have something that is a lot more concrete than, sounds good.
Part of our, this is one of those things that when we, we put this into the community, we have to make sure that everything is met and that we're, we're, we have done our due diligence. And so we have things checked off and that we have it. Things like this normally in the drawing have things like that included, like where are the parking spots and how are they, are they, is it fishbowl or is it, is it straight? There's, there's, however the parking would be on, that's really not in here. And, and you've addressed that and, and we've stated that. If we had that in the drawing, if we were able to then say, we approve your site plan, that's one thing that would, would help us. In this case, because there's, there's a lot of, of just pieces here, and I guess that we hate to see somebody in your position go through and, and, and make these decisions. You know, trusting that things have to be, we have to be able to make sure that when we approve it, we've approved what's actually going to happen or not, where we're gonna get this, or we have this coming. And it's just, it, it's just part of our process that we have to have, it's unfortunately that requires that.
So what I'm hearing you say, and I wanna make sure I'm getting this right, is in order to move forward, you want our septic permit, you want our well permit, you want a physical permit, sorry, the road permit, you want all those physical permits at this time of. Because if that's the case, somewhere there's a disconnect, because that wasn't the information that we got prior to, or I would have had those all. I mean, I spoke with the health department back in October, I have a food truck, so I've already licensed through that, so I have lots of connections, or I would have done that. But my understanding was.
Our question would be, where is the septic going on here and what's, what's required? We don't have.
It should, septic should be on there.
But is that?
It's not size, yeah, the clothing size. I don't, I just show where.
And just show it, okay.
Show the people the well, so we don't have a tap issue.
So you're showing them the site, but not the.
Thanks, I know.
And again, some real simple things that we go along with that would be, where are the parking spots on, on the property? So we could, we could see the actual layout of them on the, on the site, that's usually.
The council size, they're there on the drawing, they're, they are over the parking. We, we actually included an overflow parking on the site, because we're over fifty. We're showing a hundred, we're fifty spots over. Each spot was sized and shown on your drawing. The length of the parking lot, the number of spaces, KDA parking, they're all on the current sheet you have there. All the dimensions are there for the parking, with the parking base, the total counts, setbacks, it's all there. Now, if you're looking at a small drawing, which you're not seeing is the big one. And I brought on Steve, and I have final approval, we'll give these up in the big drawing. So you, you can have that information, but you're seeing there's what we're asking to approve tonight. But with three, I've got deferred items. Conditions, if you could, please.
What would, what would thirty days do to your plans?
Oh, it pretty much put us out of the wedding venue.
Thirty days.
Well.
You're in the worst time of the year for construction.
It's gonna be muddy mess. Oh, I'm ready right now, I've got.
Okay.
What happens is, is, you know, I would start, once I know the site plan is okay, the special review or the special permit is, is, we've got that. And I can go ahead and start all the septic guys, who will come in and give me a minute on this. I've tried to get, contact other contractors and say, are you prepared to start building? And how long will you be ready to build? If I tell them six months, they're angry. I tell them three months, they're probably gonna say, you know what, call it within thirty, sixty days.
We're just getting up on the building season.
Yeah.
Where in order to get, you have to nail them down so far in advance. That's where the, the bit of a challenge becomes.
In order to get a website produced and everything, so we can actually say, we're gonna have this venue up and running by us. So I, so we can start scheduling weddings. If we don't start scheduling the weddings now and wait till July or till we get the approvals and everything, uh.
It's another year.
It's gonna be another year, you're not gonna get any weddings coming in, you know, like in December, January as much. That's why we just, we started way back to September, hopefully get, get a status of that till March or so. We could go ahead with the crew, I could have a crew in there by April to.
Let, let, let us get to.
So one of, we're.
Still need a site plan in order to issue a building permit.
Correct. Yep.
You know, there's been some assumptions made, not by us. So I'd like to transfer those assumptions to thirty days from now, because I think we're optimistic up here. I think, I think we're pro-business and so forth.
Yeah.
But you need to do a little bit more homework, frankly. And make, you know, protect yourselves, protect us, it's just the way it is, right? Uh, I mean, I don't think we're trying to be a barrier, uh, to this really nice business, it sounds pretty good. The whole township has no banquet centers, other than the FOP.
Right.
So. You know, don't read us wrong. You, again, you can make a, a couple more assumptions, I'm not coaching you to do that, but. So I'm just telling you, there, there's some optimism up here.
So are you, so, so my, my question is, so then you're saying to us to come back with the permits?
Yeah.
I can't get a private permit till I have the site.
That's true.
They sent me, I got it right here. That's sure the site plan, those are the site plan, and your wide drainage. Are you brought the water to shut this?
And they're even asking for a thing that we're asking for, which is the drainage, where we need to see. That on this, what we approve is, we, we send this, this literally goes into the file and says, this is what we approved, and this is what you're building. And this is, when we say that, we don't have those. And not having that, we're kind of giving the contingency things and the.
That might be, the only, the only concern I have is the road commission might be an issue, because they literally do want site plan. So I don't know, we'll have to work with you guys to figure out how that works, because that's kind of a double edged sword there, like. You want the, or you want permit, that people want the site plan, but I don't know if they'll, if they'll take.
We didn't, we just need to know where on your site plan, where you're putting that. For us, it's not so much we need the permit, it's we need to know what your permit, where you're going to be able to put that.
That permit, I already, I, well, I have the preliminary, the, the residential permit, they're going in the exact same spots. That was already issued. You should have a copy of that. As far as, as far as the road commission. The driveway thing, I'm not, that, you are, that was already approved Octoberish for the residential. But that was always gonna be just temporary, so we got to, we're ready to put the permit.
What you mentioned for thirty day, thirty days. And that's one of the reasons I have a driveway permit, why I went with residential, because Jared, the engineer, said, like, I can get you a residential within probably two or three weeks. Commercial could be three or four months. And so we gotta wait for. And so if we got to wait for that to come to play, they said, we're going to be basically, because you wait for a road commission. And they're going to be, well, you know, we got to do this, this, this. We want to go to a site plan or a wire retention program. We want to say, this is what we want to do. We want the road commission saying, hey, help us. What do we need to do? We'll do it. We'll, we'll spend that. We want to, we want to make this legal as a fee. I didn't want to just, well, put an old paybar out there and say, hey, we're going to have 24 events or 24 private parties a year.
To be fair, if we'd have done that, we wouldn't be where we're at today.
We're trying to do it the right way. I didn't want to have 24 heart dances a year. Oh, I know, I suppose. We'll have one when we get approved.
The question has seen these drawings to the council. They weren't seen, they've responded today, but they want.
We could do. I don't know, like, can we do the special use of that site plan? Even or?
Don't need so.
Right, because you kind of need the site plan.
Yeah.
Complete in order to, with the special use, because you're.
Approving this, if those items listed as being unknown, at least for us at this point. Would that be something you would have as a, if we put that as the contingency, you would be that assigned as the person that would oversee, making sure to build on that?
Yes. You'd also assign someone else. Like, if we had an engineer, you could assign an engineer to do it. Or.
Edward. I talked with Stephen earlier today.
And those things are things that can't be done. Probably one of those before, I don't think done. Three, that was my concern is stipulation on there. And then really the driveways, you got to have the site pit or the site plan. To get that, we're asking them to chase something we can't give them. So if we take that one out, septic, you know, we've got the permits pending. And that, that's going to, if that changes, is the. I'm sorry. So septic, we have, you know where it's going roughly or the area, but that has to be permitted to go there. And I'll tell you, it's got it over here.
Yeah.
So as long as.
Or, or right here.
They might have just got right there. And what? That's all. It just changes everything, but you guys are reviewing that. You don't know. Me, that's, that's a big deal, so.
I think the, the unknowns probably water and then the septic. Some big project items. And yes, they can be dealt with, but not no one, one of those be.
But we do move for 30, 30 days, it would give them the opportunity to do the remainder majority of those. We would have, we would give those on that date, approve the site plan, that if we did have one contingency of that. Or a better position, I think, to make a, an approval at that point. Are there any of the other things we're asking then? So on the site plan, you just need to know septic location and then kind of get some of the answers on that. The drainage, that would be relative to being an engineer to do. The driveways, we know the permits are going to come, know roughly where they're going. They have to have, I guess the parking spots are listed on, to show now where.
Contingencies in there. I'm going to make a motion. With the, with the contingencies outlined. The septic, the drain, there's the driveways, the parking spots, and hopefully. Things won't have to, you know, change much more, but I make a motion to postpone a decision on the proposed special land use of site plan until revised site plan is submitted by the applicant. We can do this 30 days from now.
Yeah, 28.
28. March.
Oh, March 25th.
25th, I'm sorry.
That would be four weeks.
I think that's the only thing we can do. It protects you as well. I mean, it's good. You, you might uncover some things that are unfortunate. Like cost you more money. I, I don't really know, but I think it's a prudent thing that you. Bring it to a vote.
Is that something that Stephen, can you get that? So that makes, uh.
Yeah, I would just say postpone until a new site plan is provided with those three items.
Have a motion. Support. Take a vote on this. Dave?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right, that too, next month with those, if you bring those to us, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I don't, I think it'd be good there. There's a lot of wants.
There's.
I just, there's no protection of the township, that's all.
Yeah, right.
All right, we're moving on to another end of public hearing, PC 25 dash 04 at 5333 Holton Road. A special land use and site plan review for essential essential services building. We have the applicant here for that or someone to speak on that behalf?
You do.
Okay. If you want to go ahead and take a moment and tell us a little bit about what the project is and kind of what you're doing. I know we've had some updates and things Stephen was able to provide.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Brandon Miras with Williams Works. I am working with Concept Design Services. Uh, the architect of record for the Skeet High Road Commission and the Skeet High Road Commission. We're under contract with them, provide civil site plans for Holland. That was a professional engineer. So the plan is to put a total of 24,300 square foot building, about 20,000. So 20,000 of that will be for, you know, heavy equipment and such. And then there's about a 3,500 square foot office building. So we've got those septic parking, drainage, fencing. Uh, we did read the report that, that look meant, may mention of, you know, we should have 50 feet. We've got 30, we got 40. So we did, you know, some of the setbacks, we did, uh, provide, I said the actual setbacks on the plan. I hope you all have those. I did email those in, but I think it was to Kevin. So, uh, so we did provide the actual numbers and I did read the recommendation was that each, each of those did meet the four conditions. Uh, that was set forth in the zone, the zoning ordinance. And so, you know, we're lining up, the, the parking is where it is because we're lining up with the existing parking. So if there's, if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but.
All right, well, now we've got to know what's going on and what we'll do next is we will open up for the public hearing. So if you want to go and have a seat, we'll, uh, open up the public hearing, give everyone that's here a chance to speak on this. So I will note the public hearing for PC 25 dash 04 at 7:19. Anyone that would like to speak on that regards to this? All right. Hopefully, we will close the public hearing for that at 7:19. And I think. It's, they show we were. Yeah.
I should note that modification of the front yard setback along Michelin is 40, not 39.
Okay. Any questions that we have for? Here that we have on this, is there anything you see that? You know, lot of coverage, they're not going to do anything about. And anything about that really would mean that it's way over. Can they move the building back 10 feet to at least, would that, or does that cost much trouble on the site?
Well, I, I believe it would be possible to do. I mean, it, it would bring everything closer to our dream field and have the reserve areas right next to that. If that would be necessary to move that 10 feet, I, I want to say that it would be, it would be impossible to do that. It would, it seems like it would be, it would be possible.
Right. If we relocate our. Bring this, this, move back as well, right behind the building.
Yes. Unless we, unless we shorten, yeah, but we can't really shorten the spaces, so that would, if we slide it back, are you with that? Yeah, they want to move it just ways.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
I think the preference would be the ability, I was kind of given this, this site plan by Concept Design. They were, it was to the specifications, to the desires of the, of the road commission. But the building location and then allowing for the radiuses, for the parking and the wash areas that we showed south of the building, those paved, heavy duty paved areas.
Yeah, I know they don't have the tunnel to work with there. I was just, I was just asking if it would still work, just to be able to.
Saying that we asked the question.
Yeah, right. Or be able to, we, we just knock one off the list that, you know, they don't get somebody coming when he stays. Now, you can build a stuff in the road. An existing. Existing parking lot, existing balance.
Yeah, there's.
But like Steve said, it is a justified modification already anyways. And it doesn't first.
See the second modification for the 39 feet, it's no longer.
That would be 40. That would be 10 feet instead of 11.
But still, you know, when you're looking at the. Make all those adjustments for 10 feet. Right, that's, yeah, yeah. We'd have a plan here that we could approve that would show the 40, and we know that we approved the 40 and can't directly change from that, so I, I think that's. There's not a lot of room there.
There's not.
I think he was, Stephen's. If we make that motion, it's. It would be 40 feet instead of 10. 10 feet from the right away. Not, that's not a big deal. Other than that, 40 foot from that, anyone would like to make a motion? Okay, John, do you?
Make motion to approve a special land use permit, site plan review for an essential services building at 5333 Holton Road as proposed. I further move that the requirements of section 5.5C be modified to allow for a lot coverage of 31.2%. Further move that the requirements of section 5.5A1 be modified to allow for a front yard setback of 40 feet for a principal building from the right away along Michelin Road. Further move that the requirements of section 4.37B1C be modified to allow for a six foot tall chain link fence to be placed nine feet from. It further moves that the requirements of section 4.46F1AI be modified to allow for the additional parking lot to be placed within the required front yard building setback.
You have your motion and support, you'll take your own call and vote. Dave?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right, move to planning zoning report for January 2025. Good stuff in there. Unfinished business, we do not have any, and then we will move on to new business. We have some discussion items here, some ordinance items with some explanations in here. And with, on the very last page. accessory buildings on.
Stephen, um, somebody approached me with an interest in an electronic billboard. Can you tell us what road that was on or would be on?
With 120 years.
It's actually here.
Hi.
Hi. We can discuss. I'm from Omar Advertising.
Okay. He's familiar, you've been here before.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
All right, we'll go through, first we have accessory buildings on corner lot, so we'll work through this one real quick. Unless you want to, can we jump ahead to that one since he's here?
Yeah, they're both under the same.
Okay, why don't we do that, since you're here and, um, it reads here, I was approached by a gentleman from a billboard company who's interested in upgrading one of their existing billboards. Displaying an electronic message instead of a static one. Billboards are not permitted by zoning ordinance. So all of the existing ones in the township are lawful, non-conforming, cannot be upgraded for an electronic message. Be required into the feasibility of a variance or changing the ordinance. Since one of the goals for 2025 is to rework the sign regulations, I thought this would be an excellent opportunity to start that discussion and focus it on a specific aspect of the sign regulations. on a specific aspect of the sign regulations. So that brings us to. Billboards. And what, what is your, your interest in this or?
Um, Jeff, these are from our advertising, um, forty-eight ninety-eight South Quarterline. We, our interest is, we operate several billboards in the township. And how all the billboards work, I don't know how familiar you are, but we pay a lease payment to a entity to lease that property, to sell our advertising to third parties on that sign. So, the reason this all came about is I was approached by several of our customers that would like to be out buying digital advertising in the area. We don't have any digital signs out this way, so I came in and talked to Mr. Kerr there and he said, well, we're looking to review the ordinance, maybe update it, so I thought maybe I'd come out here and see if there's any questions or, or anything I could address with that. Um, I will say that in the ordinance, build new billboards are prohibited, which is semi-fined. We have an existing inventory in here that we sell. And there are, there's a clause in there saying that the planning commission can make adjustments to the non-conforming signs if we come in front of, you know, planning commission. But it specifically states in there that the one thing you cannot do is approve an upgrade to an electronic sign. So, you know, if, I would be fine if just that clause had played in the ordinance. So that, um, you, you asked what sign, one I looked at was one of the KOA camera. That, that was broader, that was a request. Um, there was another one that was requested further down by the corner where it bends and it's more, more west. Um, just a couple of locations, that's, I'm not looking to, you know, I'm happy with the established inventory we have, you know, but I wouldn't like to.
No, the thing that's, that's good about the, the process of having electronic is you don't get the, the ones that peel off or become outdated or become, there's a lot of, you have the ability to access that, I imagine, I don't know if that has to be done on-site or if that's something to do remotely.
You can do that right out of the Muskegon office, we can just push on the keyboard and make those changes, you know. As far as the, the venue, if that ever got approved, that would be perfect for them, advertising locally.
Yeah.
Especially if they had something that was a dated event, you know, because we do have that ability to, you know, if something's going to happen in two weeks, we can put it up there. You know, and make, make the public aware of it, just in that short timeframe.
How close are the existing digital billboards to Dalton Township?
I think we do have one that's at the corner of Dykstra and Whitehall Road, so that would probably be the closest.
So that's Muskegon Township?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
So we, we have one in the area.
I think a lot of controversy of digital was a big deal in the early two thousands. You know, bright lights.
Yeah.
Distracted, distracted drivers, et cetera.
Yeah.
You know, they're pretty much everywhere nowadays. I, I will, will admit, you probably too, sometimes it's crazy bright, depends upon what's being presented and so on, but I don't, I wasn't here when the board just, or the planning committee decided that we're not going to allow digital in our.
I, I don't remember.
I bet it was early two thousands.
These new, new units are very light controlled.
Yeah.
They adjust to whatever, it's very ambient light. Now, you see these little reader boards everywhere.
Right.
Four by six or whatever, they're everywhere.
Right.
Those have bright red glaring, you know, we, we, we tend, we got away from that, basically, it's the short answer. Yeah.
Is there a size, width, height that you generally work with in, with your company, are they all different sizes?
They're, they're different sizes with industry standard, it's called poster, it's typically ten-six by twenty-three. So it's around two hundred and forty square foot, and we're even going smaller now to two hundred square foot, ten by twenties. We have a lot of those, uh, southern regions, my territory goes from Niles to Ionia to Luddington, so I'm anywhere in there.
If there, like the, the ban of on new signs was lifted, is this like, would you come in and put signs in, like?
That wouldn't be the intent, no, no.
Well, I mean, like, would, would it be like prime area, like you'd want to do?
Oh, where would I do, if it, instead of a.
You're not telling me where, I'm just saying, like, i- if, if that restriction wasn't there, like, would, would you be putting new signs in, would you want to?
I doubt it.
I don't care if you do or not.
Yeah, yeah, the, the reason being is it's, it's all, um, demand, and we have enough signs to cover the demand.
Okay.
Well, the demand now is for the electronic sign.
Yeah, that's what, I guess that's what I was asking, was like, is there a ton of demand and, like, we're holding up the show here, or like?
Uh, there, there, there is demand for electronic board, yeah. Yeah, that's how I first.
But you would be upgrading existing signs, you wouldn't be wanting to.
Correct, correct.
Cause new ones would need to go through us, and right now they are.
Broken.
Broken, so there is like, there's not a, and the ones that are now are non-conforming, so we, we gave it a, you know, at least a child thing, it's that you can do it, but you know, it's not our favorite. And I guess, you know, we have to make a decision, is it something, if it's going to be there? We are in the digital age, as you were well aware with, you know, this is our.
It's just what it is, yeah.
We've done that with a lot of the existing signs, where we have some of the, you know, people want to put those, the, the, away from the static signs, the, let's get some activity out there, you know, put a price up there for something, or you have to, that's kind of the, the way things have gone.
We are regulated, you know, on, on the interstates and highways, we're regulated by the state too, they, they have twenty-three pages of requirements. You know, and, and one of those they address there is space and how close to digital, can't have one digital on either side of the road, closer to seventeen hundred fifty feet from another, so.
Question, uh, do you guys partner with like law enforcement or something for things like Amber Alerts or anything like?
Yeah, 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 we do. We have a, I, I could get some materials too, but we actually have a sign on Charter Township, Dama Battle Creek, they're not their property, that we do that in exchange for having a board there, we pay them and we give them one of us lines.
Because, but that's, that's specific instance, it wouldn't.
Yeah, we do do the Amber Alerts and any, you know, uh, severe weather things, yeah, we can do those silver alerts. Those are a few for. I'm not familiar with that.
It's Alzheimer's patients that are.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Dementia.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you guys don't, that's not something you do for sure, that's like certain instances or certain.
It's, it's set up on the network, yeah, and, and it does go through, we don't have a whole lot of them in the area, but yes, we have run those, that.
Well, I'm asking, cause like, I think, I, I have no problem with doing that sign.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're probably going to have a ton of people that are going to freak out about this.
Yeah.
And that's something that I think would be helpful for people.
Yeah.
Like instantaneously, if some kid was missing or something.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I'm not real familiar with that, but that does go through the central computer that we have for the area. When, when those come in, like if the state police issued it, yes, it would go through the network. I could verify that, but yeah, I'm fairly certain on that.
So there's industry, you would be under those industry restrictions by, to have those up there, it isn't something we would approve brightness or anything, that's already restricted and there's, that's the twenty-three page that you were mentioning.
Part of that also is like, you can't have moving things, it has to be an instantaneous change from.
Static.
Yeah, from one to another, to another.
What's such an governance this right now, in the book, so I'm back with you though.
To, to clarify that though, I do not believe that the question you're asking is regulated by the state.
Okay.
As far as brightness or anything like that.
So that would be, have you seen, and I would not help him, having you help us do our, our, but just a question, if, do you have that, where certain areas that have done this, that you can be any brighter than.
Yeah, yeah, we do, yeah.
So that would be something we are not knowledgeable in, I would have no clue.
Yeah, and I can, I can get that from like, uh, um, some of the other ordinance that's had it in there. I'm not real familiar with them, but so many nets, even the lighting that they use.
Do you think the opportunity for you in this township would be our two-lane highways, roads, where we're talking US thirty-one as well?
Probably, but there, there's opportunity on that one twenty.
Yeah.
And US thirty-one, but we're regulated by what zone we're in, what the state also.
Okay, right.
So, and there's limited commercial out there right now, but that's not to say if something changed, you know, further up that, that way.
Right.
We would, I'd love to have it, you know, and that, in that case, we would like to build a new one. But as I'm not, it's not real certain.
Will be?
Yeah.
It might be interesting to see what the other town churches.
You're right. Yeah.
Something's changing for sure with that.
Yeah, and, and you're right there, in, in the early two thousands, mid-two thousands, even now in some areas, there's battles going on back and forth. Yeah, there was a lot of controversy, and a lot of municipalities have, have relaxed those restrictions. I'm getting a, a new billboard up in Walker, City of Walker. Right, um, the ninety-six into one thirty-one. Right at that.
Yeah.
Where they merge up there, I'm getting a new digital sign up there.
Yeah.
And for, for years, Walker had the Bosch to.
I think that's where most of them probably lie today, would be on the interstates, I think, but.
Yeah.
And I, I see a lot.
Yeah, but, you know, you see, you see these boards everywhere, you know, for, you know, you got a big one right there.
It's like, they just built a new, not our company, but just north of. He's got Motorsports, there's a few, ten by twenty digital billboard up there. Right on thirty-seven.
Well, since our, our ordinance does not allow this, what, what could we do today, Stephen, to? You know, we can squash it, end it right here, or if we think it's worth going forward, what would be our next step?
Step would potentially be to. Just change the ordinance, you could do a, a quick, quick and dirty fix, and just remove that language, or we could include it in our, um, discussion of the sign ordinance as a whole. It might be more. Depending on what changes we're making, when. If they just, if we're making another change, we could throw it in with that change, or if we're not making any additional changes, we could just wait until we do the sign ordinance as a whole.
It's just.
Yeah. This is too much. My gosh.
But you're this person.
I mean, in this case, here's, here's, here's a perfect example, we have a, we're saying. Can't, the first thing out of the. You can't.
You shall not.
It's like, wow, that's pretty restrictive.
Yeah.
Yes, would we want to reinvent the wheel or just want all of our digital boards? Don't have that many sign.
I think it'd be right.
What do you want us?
Is it size?
Is this, is that what we're going to do, is like look at the.
From sign, location, um.
Yeah, location.
Number.
Number. You know, flexibility. I think there are mechanisms where we can have planning commission can grant flexibility. Or, um, you know, in cases where the sign ordinance is on.
The opposition's going to say, hey, this is a rural township, I moved out here because I want some peace and quiet, my property, and I don't want this to look like Las Vegas or Kalamazoo, you know, the whole thing, but.
Those, those things look good.
Well, that's why, is I think if we allow this in, in some controlled manner of, I don't know what that would be, but, you know, we're, we're not putting up sixty by one hundred signs.
So the one you put in out there on Dykstra, that, did that have a restriction for the brightness?
I think that's, that's have control, yeah, should have that in there, so that's.
So I mean, that's.
And that's where.
A number of different ways you could do it, you could do it, you know, net silver, ambient lighting, or just daytime, nighttime.
There's got to be some industry standard on that ambient light control, just like televisions and so forth. I don't know how, you know, how we measure that, and I know it's, it used to be pixels, nits, whatever, you know, for the.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not real familiar, but I could, I could get some language from one of the other.
Yeah, they've come a long way, they're very.
We usually do this, when we, we've done this in the past, we'd say, give us an example of some that are in the other areas, that we kind of know. The thing is, I wouldn't know how great I'm approving or not, to see, you know, like to say, well, this is this or that.
Right, yeah.
I want to give it to anyone a spotlight, but at the same time, I don't want to give it to where it's a nightlight, you know, and that.
How many billboard companies are there in service West Michigan or this region?
West Michigan, there's, well, it depends on where you go.
Six. Ten?
Six.
Okay.
Yeah, um, towards Holland, Muskegon area, you got Lamar, which I think you got Outfront, you got Adams a little bit.
Yeah.
You got, uh, I don't know what he calls himself right now, Prime, Prime Sites Media, um, he's got a couple of digital billboards on, uh, he's got one on Blake Street Seaway, he's got one on, on thirty-one by Garfield.
Within a very, very short distance of driving here, you could see several, City of Muskegon, so it sounds like we have.
And I believe those ones, the last ones you guys mentioned are new.
If you represent Lamar.
Yeah.
You have that sign above the, uh, FN bars outbuilding.
Yes, for now.
That's a great place for a digital because it's not going to blast any homes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For example.
Even what little light there would be there, might give them some lighting and partying out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Preference for you would be, you had this, you said there's two sizes in there, I mean, are you looking at if we went to one size, or is there a restriction? We, you, you have a large.
Typically, the way it, it kind of works is like by the, um, speed limits, so like your seventy out on, on thirty-one, so you have a bigger sign, so you read it easier, faster speeds, something like M one twenty, you know, the speed limit's fifty, um, fifty-five, you're going to want, or you're, you're satisfied with something smaller.
Okay. So we did, we have to have something for the highway and something for. So what do we think, want to get some information and then run for the next meetings?
Does this require a public hearing? Hate to, hate to bring that up.
I mean, it would require a public hearing to check the ordinance. That's why it would be, you know, if we were to make any changes, would be more cost-effective to add them to those changes.
But not specific to a neighborhood, like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that could be something you wrote in, but it doesn't sound like that would be.
Yeah.
I see.
It would, it would be more, you know, more restricted, more.
Every time I turn this page, I read something, I go.
So it would take notice of the whole sign, I mean, ordinance as a whole.
Yeah, I think.
Ordinance as a whole could be, could be simplified.
Definitely.
Some ideas on that if you got it.
Yeah.
I'm reading this entire thing.
Want to be open.
Great.
And that's what we get into, is, you know, I'm not trying to take anything off anybody, just trying to. The last one we get into is, you know, I'm not trying to take anything off anybody, just trying to, you know, uh, represent my company, operate our business, be a good neighbor. Um, you know, and you, you getting, well, you can't do that because it says somewhere right here.
You're, you're like a, step one, we're like, keep going, you know, we can't, we can't, we have to be able to give some thought or a way to represent that, you know, as a change anyways, but to, to just literally take the.
Yeah, that's great.
It's probably just a matter of time. Cause these are already signed, they're, the placement, everything else, everything is already done up. These are just changing the words that.
The retrofitting.
Yes, but sometimes what we have to do is, um, maybe it's easier to cut pole off and back the foundation for a new pole that meets more stringent new codes, cause a lot of this stuff up here, you know, not that the wind has changed or anything, but it's eighty-five pounds per square inch for the wind load, and nowadays, new code would be, I believe, a hundred and fifteen, Steve, I don't know, but.
Right.
You know?
As long as you're changing, you change the whole thing.
Yeah, and, cause you got more weight.
Ordinance doesn't allow that right now.
Right.
So we'd wanna bring it up to twenty twenty-five and not deal with, you know, again, make it, so you can read this thing and not have to go and get a, an attorney to tell you what does this mean?
Yeah.
So we'll read this through between here and the next time, then hopefully have some other recommendations to.
Does people have some, uh, suggestions for us?
Yeah, I, I gave a couple of my cards up here to Steve, so if anybody has a question, if they want.
Is the parking lot of Michigan Adventure in this township?
Yes.
I should know that.
Yeah, we have their sign.
They just put up a.
And chivalry tubers.
Digital of sorts.
Yeah. They, they have a very, that was the issue, so the work that they did, they did on the.
So I have one toe in the water.
All in that square.
The townships are split on their property, that's why I asked, but.
Yeah.
Weird.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks like when I go to, uh, on the corner up to there, uh, eighty-two and, and one twenty.
Yeah.
You're looking at, uh, uh, Oceana, Lego.
Yeah.
And Muskegon County, all right there at that intersection.
There's a lot of signs there too.
There is. And, uh, those are pretty much sold a lot too there, but I would rather take those down, put one nice digital sign back.
Yes.
You know, restat units aren't allowed like that anymore according to the state law, so back, cancel back there. That's Montague there, Montague Township, I believe, Holden Township, sorry, you know, um, yeah.
Well, you gave us some stuff to think about here, so let's, uh, we'll get busy on some things, we have to just work through the, the wheels of government kind of go. Hurry up and wait.
Just favor.
Yeah, so we like the idea, we just need to look at this, we had this, as Stephen had mentioned, we had this on our list of to do's. Which that thing is, you shouldn't have an owner's manual for something like a sign.
No, and.
If you had recommendations on like, hey, they do it this way over there, you might want to present that to Steve, you know?
Yeah, I'll be in touch with Steve.
Yeah.
So, and let him, sure.
Sure.
You know, if you got four examples.
So we have the right verbiage, so if we're talking about, was it nits or heads or?
Yeah, nits.
Yeah, it's.
I'll make sure I get something in there that's, uh, um, you know, a couple of the ones that come to mind, that I'll, you know, paraphrase those or whatever, and get them to Steve and go from there.
So as a selling point, do you see some of the ones that we have out there would probably be reduced in size, or?
Um.
On the, like at that M one twenty, or the Whitehall Road?
I, I couldn't, I could see it happening, but I can't guarantee it, if that's a, you know?
Then it might be something goes into proposal that it can't be any larger.
Yeah.
That kind of.
Yeah, I wouldn't take any of these up here that are, that are, what they call those poster size, wouldn't make those any larger. I, like, I explained a little bit, you don't need a, the big ones, like at the KOA campground, that big one up there, that's a fourteen by forty-eight. It's six hundred and seventy-two square foot. These along one twenty here are two hundred and forty square foot, I don't need six hundred and seventy-two square foot, you know?
Yeah.
Right there. Regardless of whether it's digital or static, so.
All right.
You know, it would be interesting though, just one more comment, uh, to, uh, post township, township, uh, events or notable dates, you know, whatever, not, I'm not asking for any renumeration here, but.
Oh, yeah.
For us to consider, or the board, not us.
Yeah.
If we had that opportunity.
Yeah, we could do that, I, I also, I do that with the City of Muskegon also, for, uh, there's that border on Seaway Drive, and it's actually eastern there, is what we refer to it, Seaway Eastern, uh, what we do.
Voting hours.
Yeah, yeah, um, and if they have special like food trucks or whatever, we'll put that up there.
Very cool, let us take a look at this, we'll see if we can run this through here and, uh, gives us some more stuff to work on here, thank you so much.
Very good, appreciate the time, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was interesting, that was, I'm like, uh, I'm not gonna compete with that at all.
Yeah, that was.
But, and that, that's a, it's, it's a great idea, and I understand, you know, you just got the logistics, you gotta put that together, what's, you know, and the ordinance, pull it all together. You know, you can't approve, you know, well, and then it comes back to you, well, you guys approved it, well, we didn't approve that, but, and then they go, oh, yeah, you did.
Not that it's happened before, but it's happened before.
Yeah.
Try to avoid those. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Stephen, thank you now.
Accessory buildings on corner lots, it is currently written, zoning governance considers corner lots to have two front yards, the ordinance also expressly expressly states that accessory buildings cannot be placed in either front yard on a corner parcel. This has at times provided some confusion and complication for those living on the corner lot, sometimes a house is placed in a manner that leaves a large second front yard and a smaller side yard where it would be unpractical or undesirable to place an accessory building. Is this something that the planning commission would like to look into changing, or should this regulation be kept with individual cases decided by the zoning board of appeals? Are you getting quite a few of those now?
Uh.
I mean, I, any?
I mean, I got one last month, and it's just every now and again, you know? Every couple of months, I'm getting this, you know, like, I wanna build an accessory building on my corner lot, and then it's like, you know, the driveways on the side.
Gotcha.
With the road, you don't wanna put your accessory building. You know, you don't wanna drive across your front yard to get to your accessory building.
Yeah.
So it's something where, you know, they build their house a hundred and eighty feet from that second street. It's gotta be two hundred feet from that street. Not much room, not any room there. But I think it could be reasonable to look into either waiving that entirely, or just saying you have to go with this, you know, front yard setback, or one and a half times a setback.
Yeah.
Um, I wouldn't go any more than two. Cause at that point, you might as well go, keep the two hundred.
Right.
Um, but I think just for the corner lots, that's, you know, it makes sense.
Would it make sense for lots to just say that the front yard is just considered whatever the address is, for example?
Good. I have some.
Maybe, maybe that doesn't clean up enough scenarios, I guess, but that was just one idea that I had, because, yeah, because corner lots kind of get ripped off, yeah.
And people don't know, right, they don't know until they go, yeah, you have front yards, you're like.
They just assume, you know, they have one front yard and a side yard.
Right.
I don't, Muskegon Charter will say, you know, zoning administrator can determine which is your front, which is your side.
Oh.
And, you know.
I guess that's fair too, I guess, depending on how the house is built, the neighborhood's like, whatever.
Yeah, usually it's, you know.
Right, the front door has this.
Whatever's more narrow, whatever's more, whatever's the addressed side, so.
I think we should do something with it myself, just because, like I say, I mean, kind of loop the lap there.
Yeah, I mean, if we remove the whole, you know, that being your, you know, having two front yards language, I don't know exactly, it might clean up too much. And, um, you know, throw something that we, throw something out of alignment, so I just have to take a look and see what all that affects, give you that list and make sure you guys, you know, know that this, these are. Have you by the front yard?
Of the most recent situations like this, is what the person wanted to do reasonable, eh, like?
Yeah, it looked reasonable, there was a good amount of woods between, you know, good amount of woods between where the building was proposed and not.
So what they wanted to do made sense for where they lived, it's just this was the problem.
It was at Riverwood and River. And I guess what, what would the language be that wouldn't open up a can of worms, but would have allowed them to do what they wanted to do?
If you would have been able to determine which is the front yard.
Yeah, I think allowing accessory buildings specifically in the second, the side yard along the non-adressed side.
Yeah.
Or the side.
I mean, you could see where that would make sense.
If you.
Right.
You know, like, not having it, it doesn't make sense yet, because corner lots, they can't give a.
They can't, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I usually, when someone's building on a corner lot, I try to make sure they're aware of it.
Right.
Um, that way they can design their site. Problem that if they wanted to have a detached garage.
Would this be one where we would give you the ability to see there and then make the decision as to which is the side, which is the front, if, if you had a parameter of ideas, like, like Justice said, where, it's where your address is, or where it's?
I think.
Front door.
I think the ordinance does do a decent job of describing what is, you know, lots.
But just allowing the side yard?
Not, yeah, cause it's, it describes front property line, and then it describes front yard. Front property line is aligned along, it's usually it's the narrowest dimension or the addressed side. And then the ordinance takes it one step further and says, if you have a second street, you know, that's gonna be, it's not your front, but that's not your lot width, but it counts against your, um, your yards.
Yeah, so that's what we have to change.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of double speak that the ordinance has.
So just cleaning that up a little bit, you think that would be?
I think cleaning that up and, you know, potentially removing that or saying, you know, I think it could be beneficial as well to have the front yard setback that on a corner lot. Um, otherwise, you're gonna have a accessory building six feet from the street right of way.
Right, right, so meet the setback, which, you know, but, but allow the accessory building.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, take away the verbiage that, you know, that they have two front yards.
Yeah. That's why I wanna make sure I take a good look at it, um, make sure the language is good and that we're not, you know, creating any, any loopholes like that, where it's like, you know, six feet from the right of way, which potentially causes traffic visibility issues at a corner.
Right.
Maybe we discuss a draft next month?
Yeah, I could look into that, look into the sections, all the sections involved and see what implications the change in those would be.
Sounds like a great idea, and the fact that it's eight oh four. Um, yeah, all right, the last thing here, is there anyone that would like to make a motion through the jury?
Motion to the jury.
So, all of us, we all support, all of the favorite, uh, I oppose. You have eight oh four?
Well.
Yes, no, either.
Yeah.